We're going to open the meeting, call the meeting in order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can have a moment of silence so we can reflect on our duties as members of the Representatives of the Town of East Long Meadow for soldiers overseas and here at home and also to remember the service of Officer Michael Kroll, who served at Dallas Police Department, was a graduate of East Long Meadow High School in 1994. Thank you. Going to announce that in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Elkan is taping the meeting, is there anybody else in the room that's going to be taping the meeting?
Chris Cudrow, your honor.
Thank you, Chris.
Joseph Hodgins.
From, put it to me. Anybody else? Okay.
Mr. President, before we get going, I noticed we have an empty seat and our town attorney sitting way in the back, would it be appropriate to invite him up to join us?
Yeah, it would be fine. Jim, you want to come up and sit at the table? Jim, you want to come sit up front? Don't feel obligated or anything.
Right there, over there, right?
Yeah.
You can have a bar association meeting, this is great.
Too many lawyers. So now we have a section of our meeting for public comment, does anybody want to address the council?
Just a quick question, work out of the track.
Can you come up to the front?
Oh, very sorry.
If you could just give us your name and address?
No, right there.
Right there is good. Sit or stand? Whatever you prefer.
My name is Eddie Stankowitz, I work out at the track three days a week, I'm just wondering if anybody knows who's responsible for cleaning the track after the fourth beer cans, cigarette butts, it's still full of all sorts of firework, cardboard, and today's July the 12th. Does anybody know who is supposed to be attending to that?
I can speak to that, it is the Department of Public Works responsibility, so we will get right on it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to address the council? Okay. Town Manager Communications, I think we had our response already, you took care of that too.
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank you, thank you for giving this opportunity and thank you for giving me your confidence, it'll be a fun month, it'll be a long month, it'll be a very busy month, but I am actually looking forward to it. The first item that I put on the Town Manager Communication is relative to what I've titled Hiring Confirmations, and the reason that I've used that title, as the councilor's probably aware, at some point in the future, when the town hires a permanent town manager, that responsibility, that authority will rest fully with the town manager, at this point, because the authority of the acting town manager is limited, I need to come forward to you with any hires, fires, significant disciplinary actions, so what I did first, knowing that there was a pent-up demand, I believe, among department heads for hiring needs, I put an email out to department heads and I asked them a number of questions, you know, I asked them, you know, who has immediate hiring needs, I asked them to give me an idea of what the status of the search for new hires were and the process they followed, so I could understand that they actually had followed a process prior to putting a recommendation for a hire forward. I asked them for a copy of the job description and a copy of resumes to make certain that the resumes and the job descriptions matched up, I also asked them to provide me information about whether or not the person was a union staff person, non-union staff person, what the salary requirements were, I needed to make certain that the salary commitments that may have been made, particularly if it was a non-union staff person, met the constraints within the approved budget. And then last, I asked for a letter of recommendation from that department head, and what I've put forward in the council's packet tonight is two positions, the position of Assistant Recreation Director and the position of DPW Skilled Worker. I am going to ask you to defer action on the DPW Skilled Worker. I was optimistic that I would have all of the reference checks taken care of by tonight, I got a little bit ahead of myself trying to get ready for this meeting and didn't get all the way through the process, so I prefer to put that off until the next meeting to make certain that I'm completely comfortable with the recommendation that I put forward. The recommendation that is being put forward relative to the Assistant Recreation Director is Mr. Timothy LaRocca, and again, I provided you with a copy of his resume, I provided you with a copy of the Recreation Director's recommendation to hire Mr. LaRocca as the Assistant Recreation Director. I will note that the position is fully funded, it's a new position that was approved by the Board of Selectmen, fully funded at town meeting this last year, and approved by the Board of Selectmen. The Recreation Director did follow a search process, he identified four candidates through in-house and out-of-house postings, and ultimately selected Mr. LaRocca as the top-ranked candidate. He is a prior employee of the Recreation Department, he comes highly recommended by the Recreation Director, and I support that recommendation and would like you to confirm that recommendation if you agree.
So here motion to confirm Timothy LaRocca as Assistant Recreator?
So moved.
Will second that motion. It's moved and checked, any discussion?
One question, Bob, he's a current employee, correct?
He is a current employee, correct.
Over the last few years, interacting, you know, I've had the opportunity to interact with Tim on a number of occasions, various sports, I found him to be extremely professional, communicates well, and extremely hard-working gentleman, it's a great choice.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Colin will be very happy to hear that, he's been looking forward to this for some time. I did want to give you an update on two key positions that we are expecting to be hiring a candidate for sometime in the near future, and first is the Library Director, and I believe we heard a little bit about that at the last council meeting. First thing I did was to really dig into the status of that hiring process, and it was a very, has been a very long process, it's taken months to go through the recommended process by the Massachusetts, I believe it's Massachusetts License, Library Commission. The Library Trustees have identified a candidate that they feel is extremely well-qualified for this position, one thing I did learn though about the candidate is that they had actually not extended or even had had a discussion regarding compensation or benefits with this candidate, so I initiated that discussion last week to make the candidate aware what we had to offer, the candidate was now getting serious about the position and indicated back to us that he needs some time to really, now that the position is real and we're in a position where the town is ready to, or can move forward, he is really taking it seriously and has to do some of his due diligence, he has to bring his wife out to see the area, things like that, so the ball's really in his court at this point, and the Library Trustees are very hopeful and very optimistic that he will remain interested in the position and that sometime in the near future, I or my replacement will be able to come forward with a recommendation to hire the individual.
I have one quick question, so, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that they were a little further along in those discussions, so now that we've, you know, put compensation on the table and he's considering it, if this candidate doesn't accept, do they have a contingency plan in place, is there a second candidate that's interested, is there, did you have any of those discussions?
They do have a second candidate at this point, they do believe this candidate is significantly preferred over the secondary candidate, but they screened the list down to three qualified, capable candidates and had an obvious first choice, but they do have a backup plan if needed.
Did he give you a timetable as to when?
He didn't, his first grandchild was just born over the weekend, so he was traveling from New York State, where he's located, to Boston over the weekend, and I know that the chairman of the Library Trustees reached out to him, I reached out to him, and I said, you know, enjoy, you know, the experience of being a new grandparent and, you know, get back to me in the next week or two. It seems as though it, you know, until he knew that the town could move forward and then the trustees felt that the town couldn't, he really wasn't taking this position entirely seriously, there was all, there was an extensive dialogue back and forth, so certainly he knew that the town's very interested, but, you know, we've all gone through it, this is the position where you have to say, okay, is this really what I want to do or isn't it, I understand.
So, this kind of seems redundant, if you have to come back, would it be appropriate, and I'm throwing this out there for conversation, would it be appropriate to authorize the acting town manager to act on both these positions, the DPW, it's his own department, I highly doubt he's not going to, he's going to hire somebody without vetting them out quite well first, and the candidates that are under consideration for the library have been vetted out through a process that was done by an elected board, so it kind of seems like it's just going to be a delay in the whole process for him to have to come back here again, so would it, would it be appropriate for us to authorize him to go ahead forward on these two candidates so long as any compensation doesn't exceed any budget of amounts?
I don't see why not, I wouldn't think it would be a good idea, why continue on the process and coming back when we already know who and what they are, so we can entertain a motion to...
With that, I'll make a motion, and I move that we authorize the acting town manager to move forward when he feels that the time is proper, it's adequate, the Library Director position and the DPW Skilled Worker position, so long as any compensation doesn't exceed budget of the amounts.
Second.
It's been moved and checked.
And just to be clear, these are for the specific people, either the primary or the backup for the library, and you have a particular person in mind for the DPW, but there's not, there's anything beyond that that would come back to us?
At this point, I have one candidate in mind for the DPW, if that candidate, for whatever reason, doesn't play out, I would repost the position, because at this point, I haven't gone through a new posting since I did one three months ago, and he, he was actually my top choice at that point, and then I had a very, very, extremely well-qualified candidate that came in very late in the game, we were worried about losing him, and we lost him three months later, moving on to a much higher-paid and higher-responsibility position.
So it's been moved and checked, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Another very key position, which there's been significant discussion about, is the position of Building Commissioner, and we wanted to give the council an update of where we stand there. The position of the Building Commissioner was posted internally and externally, and the deadline for submittals was towards the end of June, I did read the job description that was posted and confirmed that it was an appropriate job description for what I believe the town is looking for, not only does it cover the typical building commissioner responsibilities, but it also covers the zoning enforcement responsibilities, which I understand has been a concern in the past. So I believe that the posting was appropriate, we had six candidates come forward, the former Building Commissioner actually provided me with information, and I can really confirm that information, that out of the six, there were four that met the minimum qualifications in the posting, there were two that did not meet the minimum qualifications in the posting. Out of those four, there are two candidates that I believe to be the most highly-qualified candidates of those four that meet the minimum qualifications, so I have already reached out via email to those two candidates, I'll let them know, because time really is of the essence of this, that we will likely be scheduling interviews sometime in the next few days, perhaps, maybe next week at the latest. My plan right now, and this is all, you know, subject to finding a suitable candidate, if we go through this process and we don't find a suitable candidate, then we'll have to go to Plan B, and Plan B may be in an interim position, continuing to look for some assistance from the community, but certainly it's my hope that out of the original posting, we find a very well-qualified candidate. So the plan at this point that I have is to interview the top two candidates, I've put together a, well, I've reached out to the Town of Long Meadow, I've first gotten the approval of Long Meadow of Town Manager to involve the Long Meadow Building Inspector in a review committee, and I've also reached out to Rob McDonald, the Director of Planning, obviously from the zoning enforcement standpoint to be part of a review committee as well, so my plan at this point is to move forward with interviews of those two most highly-qualified candidates with this three-person screening committee and see where we go from here. My hope would be that I come forward at the next meeting with a recommendation to hire one of those two people, but I, you know, I've seen their resumes, I've exchanged emails, but beyond that, I'm not in a position to offer an opinion regarding either of the two candidates at the moment.
Can anybody have any questions for Bob on that particular position, I know it was a position that people had particularly interest in here, especially at the very beginning of this, so if anybody has anything that they want to find out from Bob now?
I can add that, as I stated at the last meeting, I was going to reach out to the surrounding communities, so I started with Long Meadow, and my conversations with Long Meadow were basically to see if we could get the support needed during the duration of our search for our candidate, and Paul said he would do whatever he could. I went from Long Meadow, reached out to Lance over in Wilbraham, he basically said he'd cover us to the best of his ability as well. For there, I went to Hampden, and I actually physically sat down with Wendell over there, and he said, you know, all the building inspectors around, we try to take care of each other, they would hope to have the same support for us if they become in the same situation down the road, and it was unanimous, so they said, you know, take your time, find the right, right person, in the meantime, we'll do whatever it takes to make sure the town's covered. Lastly, I think it would be good if somebody from this board could be part of the interview process for the candidate.
I would object to that, Mr. President, it's clearly under the charter a executive power decision and not a legislative, so our involvement simply is that because he's an acting town manager, to authorize him to move forward, but our involvement has to be minimal.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion now to let Bob move forward, I mean, on this process, interview his candidates, I would assume that at some point the town manager or acting town manager wanted to have one of these members and use their resources, it certainly would be up to them.
Yep.
So that's going to be, you know, your call, Bob, whoever you want on the panel, so I'm going to entertain a motion to allow him to continue through the interview process?
Do we need a motion?
I don't know, do we really need a motion for that? We'll just, go ahead, Bob, and then bring it back when you're ready.
Thank you. I didn't list them on the agenda, but I'm not looking for any action on these, but just for informational purposes, I did want to give the council a heads-up that booking a little bit further ahead in the future, there are some other hiring needs that I've become aware of, one is the Police Department, the Police Department currently have four positions hired, open, Police Department, as you probably know, has to follow the civil service process, they are hoping to find a couple of the four candidates through a lateral transfer from another community, so it's a faster process and actually a lower-cost process, because we don't have to send a candidate through the academy, but one way or the other, they are actively in the process of reaching out to civil service to try to identify officers that can fill those four positions. The Council on Aging, Carolyn Brennan has been out on vacation, also becoming a grandparent this last week, she's advised me that in the future, most likely in August, that she will be looking for approval to hire a couple of new drivers, as well as a transportation coordinator that's been posted, she's gone through a search process and then has restarted the search process, looking for better candidates, so sometime in the near future, you'll be hearing about Council on Aging hires as well. And then lastly, I will likely have another DPW Skilled Worker position coming up within the next month as a result of internal promotions, I had one staff person leave who was our cross-connection inspector, I have another person who has taken his test, who will likely advance into that position, when he advances into that position, it's very likely that another person who is qualified to be our pump, one of our pumping station people move into that position, and then that opens up the entry-level position at Skilled Worker, and that, again, could happen as early as the next two to four weeks. The next item I have on the agenda, I grouped together as collective bargaining agreements and other funding matters, I believe that there will be action required by the council on a couple of these items, and would expect that the council would likely address that action under New Business, so you'll see that there's some repetition between the informational portion of the agenda and what I've listed under New Business of the council. The first item that I wanted to mention is the International Brotherhood of Police Officers contract, that contract was actually executed back in March, I believe, of this year, and that contract provided for raises for our officers in town, and those raises, we originally were concerned that might not be able to be met within the existing approved Police Department budget, but between myself and Sarah Menard and the chief and Penny going through the budgets, we convinced ourselves that those raises can actually be met within the existing budget, largely due to some, some staff, not really staff transitions, but how different staff members are compensated relative, as compared to previous staff members, that sometimes creates some funding flexibility there, so I don't believe there'll be any council action required to meet the financial requirements of the police officer's contract. The next item I put on the agenda is what we call the TEU, which is the Town Employees Union, the Town Employees Union is a broad union that covers a pretty wide variety of staff within the town, every, essentially staff from almost every department in town except for the school department, the DPW have town employees, they have employees in the TEU, the Police Department does, the Council on Aging does, Clerk's Office does, et cetera, it's essentially the non-managerial positions within the organization of the town, the non-managerial and the non-public safety positions in town. I put together a summary that I sent out to the council, a spreadsheet that should be in your package, that summarized the Personnel Service budget adjustments that would be necessary to meet the commitments of the Town Employees Union contract. The good news on that one as well is that some of the departments, again, because of either positions being open or because of changes in staffing and positions, are able to meet the obligations of that collective bargaining agreement without a budget increase, some of the departments, though, will require a budget increase. And if you've located the spreadsheet that I sent out going down through the departments, the Board of Selectmen Department, which will be re-titled, I expect, at some point in the future, as we work towards cleaning up some of the, you know, the town's financial terminology, the Board of Selectmen's office will not require a budget adjustment, and that's in large part because we have the town administrator's position open, so that frees up some funding to be able to cover the raises for this current fiscal year. The Accounting Department does require a small adjustment, that adjustment is $2,988 to increase to their budget. The Assessor's Office, again, because of some staff transitions, they have enough room in their budget that they can cover the increases without having to, without requiring a budget increase. The Town Clerk, Treasurer, Collector's Office will require a budget increase to meet the requirements of the bargaining agreement, and that amount is $6,846. The IT Department likewise will require additional funding to meet the requirements of the contract, that's $3,839. The Planning Department will require a small adjustment of $638 to meet the requirements of the contract. The Building Department will require an adjustment of $1,003. The DPW Highway Department, and I didn't list the Water and Sewer Divisions, which were in our building divisions, but they will not require any adjustments, just the Highway Division might have required, and in fact, it doesn't. The Health Department does not require an adjustment, because the TEU staff person that supports the Health Department is currently paid for out of the Board of Selectmen's budget, so that's covered in the Board of Selectmen's budget. The Council on Aging will require an increase of $5,612, and I do want to put a slight footnote next to that, Carolyn Brennan and myself and Sarah Menard have been corresponding by email over the past week, week and a half, fine-tuning these numbers, and Carolyn, because for not being on site, wasn't able to take a look at this last number, Sarah and myself have gone through it, we feel pretty comfortable with it, there's a slight chance that at some later date, we might have to come back to the council, once Carolyn has a final chance to put her eyes on it, but again, I think we're pretty comfortable with this number that I've put here, so it would be a number that if the council's inclined to act upon tonight, I'd ask you to act upon. The library, again, likewise, because the Library Director position being open has funding available to cover the commitments, and the Recreation Department would require an adjustment of $2988. When you add all those together, it comes to a total adjustment of $23,914 total to the, to the town's budget, I would expect, if you're considering these for approval, you would actually approve them line by line, because that's the manner in which they're approved at town meeting, and my spreadsheet matches what you see in the town meeting approved budget format, so if you were to go through and essentially approve the spreadsheet or prove the lines as presented in the spreadsheet, that would match the town meeting format as well. The last item I did want to mention, and I guess I've got questions here.
Yeah, before we hop off, I had a couple of quick questions on this particular agreement. I noticed number seven in the agreement, and I'll rely on Town Attorney if I start getting into territory that needs to be discussed, not in open session, that he'll shut out or throw something at me, but I noticed that it holds the town to conduct a wage classification study during the term of the contract. What probably was not known at the time that this was negotiated was that the, actually the charter has language relevant to the town manager developing a job classifications, job before, or job descriptions, wage schedules, a whole personnel policy program. My concern is that this will really, I believe, put the town in a bind to where, at best, we're looking at a permanent town manager coming on around the first of the year. If that's the case, the individual's really going to have his feet on the fire on a lot of different areas, and to be able to institute all the areas of the contract, this include, I mean, have the charter rather, this included, I think it's probably unfair, I wonder if we could go back and with the union and rework that language, I don't mean eliminate it, rework it so it better suits the requirements in the charter.
I'm going to suggest at this point, if you want to have that discussion with the town manager, that that should be part of an executive session discussion.
Okay. Okay. You did it without throwing anything at me.
The next item I wanted to mention, and it does involve a TEU employee, is there was a settlement that was agreed to by the Board of Selectmen representing the town with this TEU employee related to a dispute regarding regrading of the employee, and the resolution of that dispute was, and this is related somewhat to what Mr. Madison had just indicated, the resolution of it was not to approve or disapprove a regrading, but to indicate that regrading of this position would be considered in accordance with the wage study and classification study that's referenced in the collective bargaining agreement. As a, as part of the settlement agreement, the town agreed to a payment in fiscal 17 and a payment in fiscal 18 of $1,500, so that obligation also has to be met within the recommended budget adjustment if the council sees fit. So in the spreadsheet that I presented, you'll see at the bottom of the spreadsheet, I indicated a total for the Planning Department adjustment that would include both the collective bargaining agreement adjustments as well as the settlement agreement.
I have a question for council, so with this settlement agreement, they're giving a stipend for two years under the settlement agreement, does that mean that that position is still theoretically up to be considered for re- Does that mean that that position is still theoretically up to be considered for regrading as well?
Yes.
Is there a reason why that they didn't make a determination as to whether or not the position should have been regraded? And if so, then why did they offer a stipend?
I can answer that, actually. There was some contract language that in their contract, when they replied for a regrade, they needed, it was supposed to be within a 30-day, like 30 days of knowing that you have new job responsibilities, you can apply for a regrade. The understanding at the time from the employee was that they were not going to end up being permanent duties. But it was outside the 30-day window when she finally had realized that they are, in fact, extra duties that she received. Both, she, she worked for two boards. Both boards had recommended her for the regrading, but there was an issue with timing on the timeframe of her actual filing for the regrade. It was going to, at some point, probably end in an arbitration. So we sort of headed off at the pass to say, we can come to an agreement where we don't end up paying for arbitration. And this is the number that we kind of settled on.
And actually, through the chair, the number that was settled on was actually, this whole process was brought by the union, by the union itself, the union reps rather than us. We agreed to it, but it wasn't brought by us. It was brought by their own union.
And if she did, if the regrade had gone through, the actual pay increase is somewhere in the neck of, neighborhood of $3,000 per year. So it was like meeting in the mail kind of type of thing.
The next item I have, and I'll indicate, as I mentioned, I expect that we will want to go to executive session. This is the item relative to former chief Melis's outstanding pay. And talking with a number of counselors, my understanding is there are, there's a need to have discussions, particularly relative to potential litigation on that topic, and would recommend that the chair, that the president consider going into executive session.
I actually agree because this is a litigation issue. So I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters of pending litigation that may be detrimental to discussing public.
Could we include in that executive session the collective bargaining issue that we discussed?
Collective bargaining agreement.
Collective bargaining, to discuss litigation and collective bargaining agreements that may be detrimental to the town to discuss in public.
And to discuss matters related there to involving, potentially involving attorney-client privilege matters.
Matters involving attorney-client privilege.
To return to all.
And then we will return to reconvene in open session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I got it, I got it. Hi, Paul.
Aye.
Kathleen.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Eric.
Yes.
Mike.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're going to go into executive session.
Out of necessity, we take a two-minute recess to return back to open session.
All right, it's moving second. Any discussion?
Better not be.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Second session here. So we're going to move on to the town council, item D, or letter D, town council meeting facility enhancement impacts.
Eric. Pick up where we left off. Item D was an item I put on the table for really a little bit of direction from the council. You know, after hearing the discussion of the last council meeting, it's pretty clear, I believe, that council would like to remain at this location as its permanent location for council meetings. Actually, I agree with that. I think it's a great location. It's accessible, everybody knows where it is, parking is great, you know, we have the ability to expand into the outer room if necessary. So I think it's the right decision. At this point, I expect there'll be some desire to make some improvements to what we have here. You know, we're working with somewhat of a temporary setup from the facility standpoint in terms of tables and chairs and recording facilities and things like that. So I would look for a little bit of direction for the council. Ideally, what we'd like to do is to move forward, we're planning for maybe it's coming in and bringing in some breakdown tables and other types of things that we can do that are, that really fit this council and the role of the council better than what we have here today. At the same time, I do want to recognize that this building, this room, is used very heavily by the council and aging. So we will have to work carefully with Carolyn and make certain that we can, you know, work with her and not impact her operations too much in terms of issues such as setup, tear down, things like that. And there are some solutions to all of that, whether it's DPW or others providing some labor, maybe to help with, you know, breakdown in the first thing in the morning or things like that. So we're not putting too great of a burden on council of aging with the limited staff that they have. But I guess what I'd like the council to do, if they're willing, is to identify maybe a point person of the council to work with myself and ultimately with my DPW hat and building facility hat, come up with a more permanent solution for a meeting space here that will likely involve some, you know, improvements in what we sit on, what we sit in front of, and maybe some IT improvements as well, and possibly some LCAP improvements. Don Mackey and I have talked about a number of items that would be beneficial if we're looking at this as a long-term hold.
Under rules, that'd be the council president for the point.
I would like to know, does anybody want to volunteer to do that first?
I'd be interested.
All right. Anybody else?
All right, Eric. The only comment I can make is right now, these Chromebooks are pretty good as far as power. But if we have a real long meeting and these things start becoming issues about charging, we may need some type of safe power strip here so we could keep these things going.
Like, definitely. Safe one?
Well, not tripping.
Would expect that.
God knows I'd find a way to trip. So far, you got it nice and taped.
One thing I did want to bring to the council's attention, I definitely don't need any action this tonight, is that town meeting approved the second phase of funding for town hall renovations at town meeting this year as a capital project. Within that appropriations was a smaller amount of money for making sort of some of the improvements that I'm just talking about right here within that town hall meeting space. So the council at a later date, if it chose to, could decide to essentially reallocate those funds that were approved by town meeting for that location, for this location. The next item I had is not to act on licenses, but to talk a little bit about the licensing approval process. And I don't quite honestly yet know all the licenses the town issues, but we issue a lot of different licenses. And as the council knows, the licensing responsibility has been retained by the council as council responsibility. And I believe the reason for that is to make certain that access to the residents in the licensing decision-making process is maintained. And the council meetings provide that opportunity for residents to come forward and have input. Upon advice from Attorney Dunnehugh, we're in the process of putting together a list of all the licenses the town has historically issued. You know, the statutes that give the town the authority to issue the license, just to make certain that, in fact, it is a license and not a permit, because there are differences. But I expect we'll be putting a long list of licenses in front of the council for things as unique as milk and cream licenses. Any business in town that sells coffee and provides milk to mix in the coffee or cream to go with the coffee, in addition to anyone that actually sells milk and cream actually has to get a milk and cream license from the town. So it will be a wide variety of different types of licenses. And I think the council will have to put some thought into what processes you want to put in place for approval of those licenses, once you know what they all are.
Would you also be able to identify what the fees are for these licenses?
Certainly.
Because, and I think one thing we may want to consider is just to see the parity of the fees. I know, for instance, you know, Tom can appreciate it, dealing with municipal lien certificates, the standard for a while was $25. And the town realized that other communities were going to $50. And that's now has become the new norm. Couple towns like Wolverham, for instance, I believe, still keeps it at 25. So if we have, let's say, a one-day license and we charge, what, 10 bucks? Well, maybe that's fair. But if it's, we're, if we're like, you know, 1970 prices still, we may want to look at that responsibly and determine whether that's a reasonable price point or not.
I think that would make sense as part of that tabulation of the licenses, what the fees are, perhaps attempt to do some community surveys of what our neighbors are charging for the same type of licenses.
Exactly.
The reason that this matter's really brought in front of us today is we do have a number of one-day liquor licenses that I've put on the agenda as a new business item to act upon tonight. Even the process of that, if the council presumably will take a vote on those licenses as a full council, decisions have to be made. There are two pieces of paper that have to be signed. The actual license has to be signed. What entity is going to be authorized to sign on behalf of the council? Presumably, it's a council member, maybe the council president perhaps. And typically, we send out a cover letter that goes along with that license as well. And on that topic, I did want to note that town clerk, treasurer, collector received, I believe, today, two additional license requests that have not been put in your package. And I know this leaves us all, and I just received them at the beginning of this meeting. One of them is a fairly timely request. It's for an event on Saturday, July 23rd, that we received today. So in the consideration of licenses, and I'll give the president the document I have in front of me, that you may want to consider this one as well, if you feel that's appropriate. So I don't know if there's any discussion needed at this point, or maybe if, as I said, minimally, we need to know, once the council takes action, licenses, where we go from here, who acts on paperwork and things like that.
I think that's a great job for the council president.
Thanks.
He's practicing his signature even as a speaker.
Speaking of licenses.
Anybody feel differently?
No. But, I mean, as far as the actual paperwork, that'll be done through the office.
Right.
You know, that used to be done by Lorraine, so it'll be done by Marge. And which you just brought to us for signature, because they're the ones who make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, they're vice versa, however that works. So, you know, everything's in order. So that's the way it worked in the past, so I assume we try not to reinvent the wheel.
Sure. That's certainly the plan. You know, once you get that list of licenses, a whole variety of things you may want to consider. You might want to consider a licensing subcommittee, for instance, perhaps. Again, it's all subject to your own internal discussion. But we need to get that list of what they are first, and then you can decide how to act upon it.
Oh, yeah, wait till December.
In terms of the one-day liquor licenses, just a suggestion, because I noticed some of these are really time-sensitive and you're getting them. My guess is it's the same facilities that over the last number of years have applied for these. It might be worth, because of the change, and at least right now, at least until we establish some other procedure, all the requests are going to come before the full council. It might be worth the correspondence to those facilities, advising them that, you know, they need to get those requests in in a moment.
There is actually a 30-day requirement.
There you go.
There's a 30-day requirement of prior notification. Problem is, unlike even some of the permits, you look at, whatever, it's the Lions, you want to say no at the last minute to a group like the Lions, you know. So traditionally, we've kind of made these efforts to accommodate, I guess, for lack of a better term, Paul, right? And we've kind of like meant, and so they're used to that, I think. So a letter may not hurt to our ones that are frequent to say.
What we could do is maybe save on postage by, because they're frequent enough, we can attach a colored letter or paper and attach it to all the permits as please note in the future. And as they get one, they'll have the next one, it'll be already part of the, part of the licensing package.
I think we need to get word out, it's, if they've grown accustomed to being able to come in the week before, then whether that's allowed by law or not is kind of irrelevant at this point. I think we should just go back to what the statute allows for. Because that's the way we operate.
Yeah, plus, everyone's under a learning curve now with the new board. If we meet once a month, then people are going to have to be more proactive to get their request in. If it's something that's going to happen August 18th, then they've got to know, they've got to get it in. You know, they can't get it in August 12th. They got to get it in before the next meeting, so.
And we met so frequently at selectmen that they didn't really have to worry about it.
For that purpose, at times, so.
Right.
And have a last-minute license fee. There you go. I'm a Republican, what am I saying this stuff for?
The last item I had on my agenda, and a couple of informational items I want to add to the end, is as the council's probably aware, the, relative to boards and committee appointments, the council makes it clear that elected boards continue to serve for the duration of their term unless a member chooses to resign or other reason that they continue to serve. I reached out to town council. The input I've received from town council is, please correct me if I misstate this, Jim, is that any appointees on committees remain as appointees until either they resign or a new replacement is sworn, or, and until such time as a replacement is sworn into that office, they continue in that role.
Well, if, unless the board or committee is replaced by another form of, another aspect of government that was voted in as a charter, but until that time, an example of that would be the board of health.
Right.
That the old board of selectmen served until such time as a new board is appointed by the town manager.
Right.
So there are some exceptions to that, but generally, what you said is correct.
If I could add to that, because I'm glad you said that, because I know I was in, we had a, we had a health, board of health meeting last week. And Amy was already talking about looking for candidates to come onto the board of health. And I didn't say anything, but I didn't think that was under her purview. I thought that was under the town manager or the, or the town council to be the body that would, that would appoint and put people on the, on the board of health.
Board of health is a town manager's appointment.
Okay, all right.
What prompted me putting this on the agenda is what I believe to be the correct, although I haven't, I haven't reached out directly to the board of health member. My understanding is that there's one board of health member that may choose not to serve after another month or two and may be looking to step down at that point. Recognizing that finding a qualified candidate will take some time, and that there's a process that we should be following in terms of advertising, getting the word out, defining what we're looking for. Amy Petrowski and myself have started a discussion of what that process might look like, recognizing it probably doesn't finish when I'm sitting in this seat, but we can get it started while I'm, so she's in the process of developing a job description, talking about where do we want to get this notification out, what information do we want to put out to start trying to attract, and what the requirements are, because there may in fact be some statutory requirements that Attorney Dunnehugh had mentioned to us today that we may need to fulfill. And if we're looking for a new candidate, that this may be the time to try to fulfill those statutory requirements.
That was right. And the IT people also involved, maybe we can get something on our, you know, volunteerism page on our, on our town website to say, you know, looking, these are positions we're looking for. If we can, or at least, and share links, even if it's off-site, at least put links together of what, you know.
One of the reasons, in response to the acting managers' question with respect to a continuing of appointments to existing boards and commissions, you know, most of your members are on a three member term. So there are a couple of positions that are expiring currently. And what I've run into in the past in other communities that have similar situations to this is where sometimes you forget to appoint a new member, the term expires, you forget, the selectman or the mayor would forget to appoint or wouldn't get someone to fill that position. And the issue always became, what happens to any votes that are taken after the expiration of the term? And I did some research years ago. And the result is that in order to keep that situation from existing, once you make an appointment for three years or one year, whatever, that person continues in the office unless and until they resign or until their appointment expires and the appointing authority has designated a new person to fill the position, and that person takes the oath before the clerk. So that it keeps the continuity going and it keeps the decisions from being challenged as being ineffective because you have a member whose position expires. So, and I wanted to make that clear for the record, because it's going to be a question that may come up, because a lot of your positions, even though they're expiring, you may not want to fill right away because you may want to leave it to the permanent manager when he gets here. So just for clarification, in order to make that statement.
My focus right now, in the six days that I've been doing this, is to focus on things I know about. And I believe that we may have a board of health need in the relatively near future and really focusing on that. And then beyond that, I would agree with Attorney Dunnehugh that refilling positions that need to be refilled is probably best left until a permanent manager, providing the current members are willing to continue serving as current members, is probably left to the future. Okay, lastly, two quick updates. Again, no decisions needed. I didn't put on the agenda, but I became aware, I believe, that the town of Hampden I didn't put on the agenda, but I became aware, I believe, that the town of Hampden sent an email, I believe, to most council members about a community development block grant application. I just want to talk about that for a moment, in case it caught you by surprise. Who sent that?
Town of Hampden.
That comes from Hamp?
Yeah.
Before you get into that discussion, could I just ask you, through the chair, just ask you to explain the reason why it was not on the post-council intended items?
The reason why was the information really came to me fairly late in the process. It was my intent, given that I wasn't looking, this is strictly informational, I believe I have that ability to provide information to the council.
The purpose of it is just to say, to avoid the issue in the future of people saying, you have the posted agenda, we didn't know that item was going to come up, we should have in the record why, it's there, so we're having the discussion, that's all.
So, in the case of the town of Hampden, I believe, the town reassessor just provided me with a copy of letter yesterday, and told me that she was under the understanding that the town of Hampden had directly emailed all the council members regarding the application. The, my understanding is the town of East Long Meadow, for a number of years, had tried to apply on its own for community development block grant funding, which currently is up to a maximum amount per year of $800,000. Had typically been unsuccessful. It didn't meet some of the income criteria and other types of things that help to make projects more successful. It is taking, the town has taken a different approach over the past handful of years, and we've teamed up with other communities, and by teaming up with another community, we increase our scoring potential. We did that last year, for instance, where we teamed up with the city of Agawam on a ADA compliance evaluation that was funded, what we did receive funding for and was done jointly between Agawam and East Long Meadow. The intent here, again, is to do the similar type of thing with Hampden. What community development block grant money funds if we were successful, and there's really no projects yet identified, was really the concept of, are we willing to work together? And to do the handshake, and the two communities are willing to work together at this point. Can be infrastructure projects, they can be housing projects, they can be access, disabled access-related projects, a number of different things that the town could benefit from. So, we're in the process of, very early on, even thinking about what those might be, but the two communities are intending to work together. Then the last item, and the reason for this coming up, is that it's a very dynamic topic that, in fact, just came out of discussions yes, or just evolved further discussions yesterday between the town of Long Meadow and the town of East Long Meadow. And informationally, that's the possible development at the intersection of Maple Street and Dwight Road. Little bit of background, because you may have seen it in the press, heard about it, and I don't know if there will ever be a need for council action on that project. There could be at some point in the future, will definitely require planning board action, but in concept, what it is, is a development that would be seated, would be situated in Long Meadow and East Long Meadow, that would be involved a couple of different types of healthcare facilities, that would essentially provide a continuum of care, all the way from a skilled nursing facility up to, you know, typical medical offices, all in a simple campus, in a single-campus-type involvement. The planning boards from the two communities have had discussions of, are we willing to treat this as a single project? And ignore the town line that runs down the property. The property, 13 acres of the property is located in East Long Meadow, seven acres of the property is located in Long Meadow. Both entities would issue separate permits, because legally, they would have to separate, but there might be some, some requirements of a permit that would be met in Long Meadow that the town of East Long Meadow would recognize that issue, that parking space requirement, that whatever it is, might be met on the other side of the town line, and vice versa. So, looking at things holistically, and both planning boards appear to be willing to work together. The big issue is obviously traffic, and that's the one that we're really pushing on a technical standpoint. Pushing on, in fact, the three intersections that are, would be impacted, you know, most significantly in Long Meadow would be the Converse intersection, but the shared intersection that we have, it's technically not shared, because it's 100% in Long Meadow, but the Maple Street, Dwight, Williams intersection is 100% in Long Meadow, but obviously has a big impact in East Long Meadow. And then the Benton Drive and Chestnut Street intersection, really pushing on, potentially using this project as a way to not only mitigate its own impacts, but maybe try to identify some long-term solutions that this kind of becomes the catalyst for. That's, I just, as I said, you may read it in the newspaper, and I figured, it's important enough that I want to address it with the council.
Has police and fire between the communities that talked also, in terms of 911 response and things like that?
We had a joint staff meeting with staff members of both communities, including public safety, about a week or so ago. So, yes, again, it's very early, there's no formal submittals, there's no, nothing to review and approve at this point, but it's, is this concept something that might be workable between the two communities?
It sounded like, from the article, that they were going to do a traffic impact study anyhow. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's actually, there was a study, this project originally evolved as a Long Meadow-only project on a seven-acre parcel, and then as the two property owners and two developers started to realize that there might be a synergy by putting these two projects together and creating a single campus, that study will be replaced by a new study that takes a look at, again, not only the total project, but we're asking them to not only, to take a look at, at least conceptually, what are some long-term solutions to traffic along that quarter? That, again, may not be met by this development by itself, but will help to give us some direction of where we might be able to go in the future. And just very quickly, I was going to mention, what I see next is, for me, and certainly, as my boss, feel free to speak up if there's any direction. Building commissioner is obviously a number-one priority. Keeping that moving, getting, hopefully, to the point that, you know, we're in a position to retain the building commissioner in the near future. Library director, obviously, is very important as well. One thing that I have on my to-do list is to, we've made some updates on the website right now, to recognize the change in the form of my goals, to try to develop a town council website. Right what's there really now is just a placeholder, and obviously, when I develop it, I'll put it in front of the council to look at, but really talks about the council, the purpose of the council, and the responsibilities of council, as written in the town charter, the same type of thing on the town manager web page, so anybody hitting our website understands what the two bodies are, who's serving those two bodies, and what the roles of each one of those bodies are. And then administrative issues, you know, I've been, I've been putting out fires for six days and more, the administrative issues will start coming up to be cleaned up and worked on over the next several weeks.
Thank you, Bob, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And we're going to act on our minutes of the, item number six, act on the minutes of the July 1st meeting. We don't have a clerk really, hold on. We do have a clerk, I forgot. That's you, you're the clerk and the clerk.
Yes.
And the collector and the treasurer. So, you have four jobs. So, make a motion to accept the minute, meetings of the minute, the minutes of the meeting from July 1st, 2016. Moving to second, any discussion?
There is. I have some amendments. Do you have a copy of them with you, Tom?
I do.
So, on the first page, ninth paragraph down, starts with, Mr. Madison made a motion to the council members.
Okay.
Okay, you there? So, it says, Mr. Madison made a motion to the council members, as well as department heads, strike department heads, that wasn't part of the motion. Incidentally, I did, on all of these changes, I went back and watched the LCAT video to make sure that my, my corrections are right, so. And then, to keep going, would go through the council president enacting town manager for requesting agenda items, and the motion was for communication, except when the communication is initiated by the town manager. Then on the last paragraph on that same sentence, the motion that was made to authorize the council president not to draft a job description, but to advertise for. On the, the next page, third paragraph up from the bottom. Mr. Madison then made a motion to accept Roberts rules, it's not Roberts rules, it was the proposed rules as amended. So, the motion was to accept the rules as our council, interim council rules, not just Roberts rules, but the rules that was presented before the council. Then on the following page, top paragraph. Strike on smaller items which may be better, excuse me, on smaller items that, which may be better handled by subcommittees or advisory groups, was not, was not part of the motion. Okay, same page, the fourth paragraph from the top. Council president, that the agenda at the council's next meeting should be formed, forming an appropriations subcommittee in its, to study and recommend debt policy. It's not an appropriate, it's not a budgetary appropriations subcommittee, it's with a specific purpose to study and recommend debt policy.
Is it still subcommittee?
Yes. Which didn't make it to the agenda.
Well, you know why? Because I put it on, and then I looked back, and I was, I put the bylaw, I put the bylaw subcommittee on instead.
It's no rush, we can get it at the next meeting, that would be great.
And I actually had it on at first, and then I called Bob back and said, no changes to the bylaws, and I had them both on there one time, and then I was like, no, because I went back to the charter and looked at the one when I had that specific date we talked about. It was the bylaw review committee there, so, that's my fault.
So, Mr. President, I would move with those amendments, I just gave the clerk as a amendment to your, to the original motion to accept minutes.
Any objections, anybody? All in favor?
Aye. I don't think the motion was seconded, you didn't ask for a second.
Oh, sorry, my fault. Any second on the motion?
Let me see if I got it right. His motion, your motion is to accept the minutes with your amendments.
His amendment, yeah.
Or are we voting just on the amendments?
No, actually, I was just making a motion to, under Roberts rules, I would make a motion to amend it, the original motion.
That's why I want to be clear on, that's okay.
So, we still have to vote on the original.
So, your motion's been made and seconded?
Yep.
Correct, okay.
Great. So, now it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the approved amendments.
I think that, that motion's already open, we still have to vote.
With the amendments, okay.
That one's already open, it didn't second it.
Okay. So, now we have to. Second of the.
Any discussion on the amended minutes? Accepting of the amended minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
It's a little easier, it's no longer.
Yeah, I know. I read the book.
Yeah, by the way, on the book, thank you, Kevin, for recommending that. You're absolutely right, I bought the book that you recommended, and it's much easier to, yeah, it is.
It's right, Amazon Prime day today, I want it, that five bucks is even cheaper.
So, now we go to.
And Mr., I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to say something real quick on the minutes, just for future meetings. I know a lot of councils and a lot of commissions want to be addressed differently. The way I did it was very formal, you know, Mr., in your first, formal first names, doesn't matter, because I know some boards and commissions, like Don's okay, or Kathy, or Mike, or whatever. It's just a style thing, if the formality is fine.
I don't disagree with this, I mean, I couldn't care less either way, to be honest with you.
Well, it's an official record, and if questions come up, we are the legislative body, if questions come up as to what, then it's viewed by, so I would keep it formal, in my opinion, ultimately.
And the other thing I just want to bring up is, I like to do a chart or some kind of summary at the end of every meeting, minutes to summarize what votes were taken, what motions were made, what the motions were, and what the outcome of the votes were. So, I'll put that together at the end of every minutes, of all the minutes going forward.
Okay.
It's number seven.
If that's going to be done, when you're voting your minutes, you're voting your minutes, and the document prepared by the clerk is a separate piece of information maintained by his office, not part of the records of your.
Right. Well, for a quick reference point, I think, Jim, as opposed to anything else, if we wanted to go back. So, we'll go to agenda item seven, communication correspondence and announcements. July 7th, 2016, Kate Delaney email idea for council meetings.
Yeah, I received this email, just as a suggestion, on, it's a resident that likes to watch all the board and committee meetings, and finds it difficult to get through them, and we're working on our third hour now, to get through the whole meeting, and had come up with an idea of how to make it easier. I just thought I'd throw it out there for consideration. I don't know, maybe it's more appropriate that this be forwarded to Don Mackey at LCAT, maybe it's something that he could institute. But, it was, it was a good idea, in the spirit of trying to keep people involved and trying to keep people engaged, I thought it was worth throwing out there, that's all.
And so, basically, she's just asking for a timeline on the bottom.
She came up with the idea that if a timeline was published with it, then if somebody, you know, has a particular interest of certain action that was taken at the meeting, and wants to go right to that, they'll know where the timeline falls, and it just would speed up their, the folks that are trying to stay engaged, their ability to stay engaged. I thought it was a good idea. Unfortunately, the bad part of it is, it requires additional work by somebody to develop that timeline. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it requires any action, I just thought it was worth throwing out there for, for our consideration. If you'd like me to forward that to Mr. Mackey, I will do so.
Man, I don't have an objection to forwarding it to Don, to see if they want to, LCAT has some way to kind of do that. I mean, the only other way I would suggest is that the, on the agenda which would hit each item, and you just write the time down.
Well, Mr. Mackey happens to be here right now, so, and what's your first, what's your, not to put you on the spot, but I am, what's your, what's your gut reaction?
He hadn't seen the communication, which is why I wasn't calling him on the spot.
Too late. Too late. No, it's an interesting idea, I think there's several approaches. I actually like the idea that somebody just proposed, just somebody jotting down on the actual agenda what the time is, we could even do that. I wasn't clear, I saw the email just a short time before the meeting, briefly. I just got to read it here, refresh my memory, if, so they're looking for, they'd like to see a posting of that timeline, like on the website, is that what I understand her to be saying?
It sounded like she was looking, like, we started a new discussion on this particular item, and how far into the video is this particular item?
Right, but I guess my question is where, and I'm, I'm not sure it's completely clear, and I think it's a great idea. Where does she want to find that information? Does she want to?
I would have to glean from the, the third paragraph down, that it would be part of the minutes.
Right, yeah, part of the minutes.
Because she actually goes through the video and posts it on her own, if I'm not mistaken, right, Eric? She has her own.
Well, she did that once, yes.
And she has that for, she had done that for the charter commission meetings and some of the other stuff, so, I think she was looking for it in minutes, just so that she had a reference point, so when somebody looked at her page, they'd go, 6:10, we did this. So, they jumped to 6:10, because that's the piece that they wanted to see, they don't want to sit here for three hours and watch the video.
Bookmarking, if you will.
Right.
Right. So, that's not, so, that's not necessarily something, although it's, it's possible, but it'd be a significant addition of time in, in sort of post-production, so we go back here and turn this meeting around. I mean, it is possible to put that in the video, but that, that doesn't really, I don't think that's what she's, and that was my first impression, Mr. Ford, of, of what she was looking for, but I think she's looking for a, sort of a, an outside timeline, as a point of reference for the video.
In fairness, let's forward this, like Eric can forward this to you, and read your opinion, you know, when you have time to digest it. Maybe posted, it's great that you guys are getting these meetings out so fast, and that, I don't think any of us want to slow that down. But maybe on the LCAT 1028, there's a plug, page, you could have on it listing, like the highlighted type stuff, you know, they'll say, meeting with Don Mackey at 12:57, you know, timeline in there, or things like that.
Well, I think that's what she, I think.
But not within the body of the, of the actual, because that's going to take a lot of work to do it within the body of the actual agreement.
Right.
I mean, the agreement.
The, the video itself.
The video. But to have it, to have. The video, but to have it, to have it on the outside, you know, maybe somebody could say, okay, I'll fast forward up to that point, and then I can start watching the, Don Mackey speak to the group.
Honestly, I think it's, I mean, for tonight's meeting, now the video, the whole, the hour that you were an executive, obviously isn't going to be part of the video, so that throws the time off.
That's a really good point.
We just jot down the time on the agenda, item one, six o'clock, two, six, ten.
Right.
Right? Then it's there for her to access, the minute she can do what she wants with that piece of information.
Right, but that's not going to correlate with the time on the video, because there are going to be chunks of the video that are going to get cut out. Now, is it possible to make that correction, to provide for that? Absolutely. I mean, anything's solvable, so I, I think, I will certainly look at this, talk with my staff about it, and, you know, if I have some ideas, we'll talk to Kate, if you want to talk to Kate. I talked to Kate, and I, I know Kate, and Kate and I correspond a lot during the charter thing, and, and so, yeah, I, I think we'll come up with some ideas.
Yeah, we'd love your feedback when you have time to digest it.
Thank you. All right, then.
Thanks, Don.
Yep.
All right, number eight, where's the business? Old business, town manager search. I had a long discussion with the town, with the Collins Center, they Kobeashi is the president, I guess for lack of a better term, of the, the Collins Center, and two days this week, past week, regarding the recruitment process, what they would like to see done, some of the things that they want to do, very impressive already with what their ideas are, one of the things is that they want to come, interview each member of the council individually, and come up with a, and I know Mary talked about this a little bit, was come up with a composite of what we're looking for, for a town manager, the plan is to, at some point, hopefully before the end of July, meet with, have them meet with the department heads, sort collectively, not individually, and get a consensus from the department heads of what they like, they're going to meet, they'd like to meet separately with the fire chief and police chief, to discuss with them what their specific needs are regarding that, the candidate, and what their specific needs of their departments are, kind of how they put that profile together. They also suggested, and I thought was a good suggestion actually, was to include stakeholders in the community, for the board to kind of come together and identify some stakeholders in the community that, on both sides of the pro and con charter issue, to make sure that we've included people that didn't maybe support the charter, for whatever reason, and get their input on what they think, at this point, now that it's passed, what qualities they'd like to see in a town manager, and then some stakeholders on, decided, I guess, supporting or sort of neutral, whatever, to see what they're looking for, for the permanent town manager, that is what I'm talking about, so they're actually supposed to come back later in the week, or early next week, to try and set up times to meet with all of us and everybody else, they're looking to do that by, like I said, the end of July.
Did you ever enter into the intergovernmental agreement, did you already sign it?
Verbally, we haven't signed it yet, but I talked to him, and he knows that, basically, it's a formality to sign it, they're actually, they know we're doing it. As far as the interim, town, town manager goes, we got two resumes, two qualified candidates, it looks like, I asked Joe to reach out to the candidates, just, and do some, you know, background, find out, you know, certain things, and he'll share that, just like I asked Mike to go to the building inspectors and find out those, you know, if they're willing to cover and that sort of thing, so Joe actually, being at HR and that is his area, we kind of tasked him to see if he could talk to them, and he can talk to us now about what, you know, sort of...
Yeah, so the, the two candidates that were forwarded to us did have the opportunity to speak to both of them this week, and again, this wasn't a formal interview, it was just more of a fact finding, making sure they were still available, what, what their, you know, what their outlook looked like, and both of them are available as full-time interim managers, and both of them would like to consider applying for the permanent town manager, as long as that doesn't, you know, they're not precluded by the charter from being the interim and then being the permanent town manager, and I don't believe there's language in there that suggests that. So, both of them are highly qualified, and, you know, I guess my, my concern at this point is that we, we kind of missed the file, the cutoff date to post this on the MMA, but the purpose of delaying these two particular candidates, there's a couple of concerns, one is that we have Bob for a 30-day term, he's also in the busiest part of his, his season, number two is that these, we could wait for, you know, 50 more resumes, and these could be the two most qualified we had, and then they're no longer available, they're both actively in, in search mode, and they both bring something different to the table, I, I have to tell you, I'm very impressed with both of them, and I, and I think that the, you know, full, full member of the council should consider them and consider acting and, and moving forward sooner than later, and not delaying this process any further. So, you know, not to get into the particulars, one lives a little closer than the other, but again, you know, my interpretation of what I read in, in the, in the charter is that someone who is an interim, you know, town manager can still be considered for the permanent, is that correct?
That was my understanding of it, I read it and didn't see any restriction on the interim, I know that there was some discussion at that, at some point, and I know that other positions in the town, there was some, when they were acting, weren't going to be considered for the full-time position, but I didn't see that here. One benefit to moving forward with the process is, again, we have two qualified candidates, we are in a time, at this point, where recruitment, the recruitment piece is difficult based on the season, that came from the Collins Center, obviously, that the recruitment piece of this is going to be difficult here. Additionally, we're a little bit geographically challenged with some of the interim candidates, because a lot of the interim candidates are from the eastern part of the state, and again, summer, they don't want to work, or they don't want to travel. I seem to think we're in a good position here, if you have two people that are looking even for potential to be the full, the permanent town manager, you have an opportunity to get a candidate that may be A qualified, I know that the discussion that Joe had with both of the candidates, they're well aware that it's an open competitive process, that if either one of them was selected for the interim position, there is no guarantee that somebody more qualified doesn't come along, and they don't get it, they just wanted to not be disqualified based on the fact that they were interested in interim position, so...
So they do have the education background and every, all the checklist that we have?
Yeah, I get the resumes, if you guys want to take a look.
Yeah, sure.
You just post them on the, on the drive?
We can share that with everyone.
Yeah.
On the drive, okay. That makes sense, everyone have an electronic copy, and they both bring something a little different to the table. Paul, if you want to speak to, to, you know, kind of your experience with one of them, she did apply during last.
Sure, yeah, when we had our, last December, when we were looking for our, our interim town administrator, there was a lady from, I believe it was East Windsor.
Thank you.
Yeah, she lived in Broadbrook, but she was a chief executive officer in East Windsor, she was actually a, a, what's called a first selectman, which means she was a full-time position, and she was in, she managed a staff of 75, and she was, in my opinion, very highly qualified. Needless to say, I was outvoted at the time, but I thought she was very qualified. The only, one of the downsides that one of my other board members had was that the budget in her town was $32 million, as opposed to 54 here, but in the ultimate scheme of things, if you can manage that budget, you can manage another budget, and, and just, just basically, you know, once we interviewed her, I thought, I, once again, I'm just repeating myself, but she was very highly qualified, and I thought she would have made, made a great interim town administrator.
And I, and I think, you know, from both of their discussions and, and trying to get an understanding of their leadership style, understanding that we've had, they both understand we've had a change in government, they both understand really what it's going to take to help people, especially the department heads who have worked autonomously, and how they're going to help them make their job better by alleviating some of those, you know, responsibilities that, that they're having to deal with, that in most organizations, they wouldn't have to deal with, because there'd be, you know, formal leadership with a, with an HR department, and, and I, and I liked what they had to say, and I, and I think that's why I would be, you know, I'd be willing to, to recommend that we interview both of them as a board, not necessarily create a subcommittee, because there's only two. And, and so that everybody, you know, we can plan accordingly for this, you know, so we're not asking, you know, what's your favorite color, what, you know, we, we can plan what, what we want to get out of them, because really, we want to understand, there, there's some basic requirements, but then it's about leadership development, how they're going to bring the organization together to meet the common goal, and have everybody working in, in the same direction, you know, working with, with our seniors and, and working with our various department heads and things of that nature, so I, I think we should move forward before we lose one of these candidates, and then we have one choice, and then I think then we're going to end up having to delay the process, because we only have one choice. What timeline are we talking, at the end of the month, maybe? I, I think that we can ask them to both be present at the next meeting, and we can set time on the agenda to have a formal interview process. Do we want them apart, maybe, just talk to them individually? I would.
I would.
I want them both in the room at the same time.
Yeah, so we, that's what we did.
That's kind of what I would do.
One way outside. And then 30 minutes later, the other one.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So I, I did, as the council presidents are aware, I reached out to town managers I worked with in the past, on the North Shore, the South Shore, Central Mass and Western Mass, I covered the whole state pretty much, and I said, look, we're, we're coming, coming up rather empty with the MMA and Collins Center, you know, who's out there that would be interested in this kind of work, heard back from the last one today, there's nobody out there right now, in the field.
To do the interim work.
To do interim work. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not talking in full-time, interim work, there's, there's limited number of people that do it, those that are interested in working in the summer are a few, those that truly are interested in working in the summer are already working, so...
And again, we're trying to get people to travel from wherever.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would support if we have two qualified candidates, if there appear to be two qualified candidates, before we lose them, let's, let's interview them, and let's get the process moving.
Are they, without divulging the full resume, are either or both of them in full-time positions now?
One is currently working in a part-time position, doing grant work for Housing Authority, she was an elected official, she didn't win her, she served two full terms, so eight years, and she didn't win her last reelection, and, and the other individual is currently not.
Employed.
So...
They've obtained a motion to move forward on the process and bring the candidates in for an interview, for the interim position.
When you say our next meeting, Joe, what did you have in mind, two weeks?
Well, that, yeah, yeah, because, so Bob's term expires August 1st, or, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, so, no, my, I'm only trying to think of in terms of how logistically I mean, it'd be worth some, how do we, how do we do that, Counselor, where some conversation of the council to formulate, it's an official interview, formal interview is what you're planning, right?
Right.
So, so we need to have some discussion in that regard, but we don't want to have that in open session, because can we, can we, in, in an executive session meeting, discuss interview?
Interview candidates?
Interview questions.
Qualifications and questions. Of the candidates?
Yeah.
Not really, you, you can have a preliminary screening committee, who can interview the candidates to make a recommendation to the full board.
Right, yeah, we've already decided we're not going to.
Yeah, because there's only two candidates.
So I guess our opportunities to discuss our interview process would be limited, okay.
Well, one, one thing you could do, which we've done before, is propose questions and send them, in this case, to the acting town manager, I'm trying to get my title straight, and then from that, you know, X number of questions can be culled, and then, or we can send, you know, they can all be sent to us and choose the best questions as far as what you think, as far as...
Can you maybe ask Collins to, to come up with some questions that they've used as well?
True, actually, yeah, yeah.
They actually did say, you know, they kind of were stagnated as well on that whole interim process, but they knew that we had a couple of applicants, and said that if we needed any help with any of that, that they...
So it might be worth reaching out, and could we also give us some...
I can call Dick back tomorrow.
Could we also get, copy the charter to each of the candidates?
Can we?
Yeah, I can get it to them.
I can tell you, they both already reviewed it.
They have, that's good.
So I'm confident they have, yeah, I'm confident they have it. You know, obviously, I, I think most of us here have interviewed people before, nothing personal, nothing about, you know, religion, sex, sexual orientation, greed, nothing like that, we want to understand what they bring to the table from a professional standpoint, I find it best to, to not ask close-ended questions, that there's, we want to have a conversation, we want to understand how they react to certain scenarios in the conversation, so it's, it's best, you know, to give them, you know, like, for example, you know, it's easy to manage A, A-level people, but here's someone you're having problems with, you know, how would you deal with this particular situation, or, you know, you know, someone who's 68 years old comes in and complains about their tax bill, how do you handle that, and then later in the interview, ask them, how do you handle someone who's 45 who comes in and complains about their tax bill? So to understand how they're going to deal with certain situations, how they're going to react, how they're going to manage people and, and develop talent. And, and I think at the end of the day, we have seven different people that have different backgrounds, we can compare notes, and we should be able to come to consensus, because we're all going to hear something different. So that's my suggestion, and I wish we had a meeting in between the meeting where we could, you know, formalize this amongst the seven of us, but we don't, and I think time is of the essence. So if we do work through Bob, if we all send in what we believe to be reasonable questions, and then we can get that down to a manageable amount for each candidate, and, you know, based on their resumes and what we might think, there might be some different questions for, for each of them. And then be prepared. So the resumes will be up on our, on the drive today, or...
Yeah, I'll do it tonight when I get out.
Or, or tomorrow, okay, I'll...
Yep.
Check them out.
Yeah, would it be more appropriate, though, to send the questions to the council president?
We could, yeah, I mean, we're into each other, I don't have a problem just sending, we don't have to respond, because that way we, it might foster more questions, as we read some of his questions.
That's true, I think it's not a violation if we just...
We don't have to, as long as we don't hit that reply button, we're not deliberating, but I'm looking at going, gee, that's a good question, there's a follow-up.
How do we call the list?
How do you finalize it?
Right.
Yeah.
We have to do it here.
Is it acceptable if I met with Bob in a week and honed the questions down, and sent a final version out to everybody that... I think that's a good idea, yeah. You know, if you guys are okay with that, I'd be happy to do that, I can meet with him and maybe buy...
I'll have some of those answers too from Collins, it should be tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
And so we can, you know, take a look at what they've asked in the past, and...
I'm happy to do that, if that, yep, and then we'll, we'll get a final email that no one has to respond to, after everyone, you know, shares their, their thoughts, does that make sense? Good, acceptable?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Do we need a motion for that?
Is it helpful to set a deadline for counselors to get their questions in?
Next Friday? Give us a week?
This Friday?
This Friday?
Next Friday?
But that wraps you up too much to meet.
We have to meet in March Friday at noon, right?
That would only give you two business days.
Wednesday? Tuesday, Wednesday. That's for the final product, right? Yeah. Well, no, that you have to get, is that... Just because we have the question doesn't mean we can't follow up with other questions based on their answers, we're not...
Yeah, the, the...
Well, as long as you're consistent.
Yeah, so if a person gives an answer about, oh, I, I, you know, I have a big problem with whatever, and you go, ooh, didn't see that one coming, you know, we can, wait a minute, what did you just say? Let's, let's talk about this a little further, you know? Okay. Whatever you guys think is, is reasonable amount of time, I don't mind, I mean, you just tell me, and then I'll, we'll finalize it, and then I'll get with Bob after that, and then I can call both candidates, make sure they're available for that, when is the next meeting? Two weeks from today.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six at six p.m. Here, okay, I can get them directly and confirm that they're both available.
Yeah, that's another calendar.
So why don't we say Wednesday, close of business, is the deadline to get the questions?
The 20th?
Good enough? Because you guys are not found, okay, very good.
Now, is that the close of business for everybody, or the close of business for Bob? Because he has a different close of business than everybody else.
Yeah, he sure does.
Is it sometime around midnight?
11:59.
All right, so we're on to B, new business, one-day liquor license request. Bob, you have one?
I did double-check with the town clerk and the, what I thought were new license requests were actually ones we already have, so what you have in front of you is the entire list I sent out in your packet, the actual requests that were submitted to us.
That's good because the first one already occurred, so.
That's right.
July ninth.
The council may decide not to act upon that one for that reason. But there is, as I listed them on the agenda, the first one, the next one, I believe, is the twenty-third, if you have that request.
Seventeenth, we have one.
Seventeenth.
St. Paul the Apostle Church, two thirty-five Dwight Road, Springfield, Mass, for July seventeenth, five to nine PM at the Social Hall, two thirty-five. Malt beverages only for a nonprofit. Apologize. Entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church, two thirty-five Dwight Road, Springfield, Mass. You, this should be East Almetto, I would imagine, it's coming to us, right?
Yeah.
Because there are halls in Springfield, ah, you saw it, sale of alcoholic beverages, beer only, as allowed in chapter one thirty-eight, section fourteen of general laws, on Sunday, the seventeenth, from five to nine.
Usual insurance on file of all that.
Yep, the insurance is on file.
Is it safe to assume that, I notice all the letters say that, that somebody actually checks to make sure that all that's on file and it?
Yeah, we have, get a copy of it.
Oh, okay, good.
And so then they got to fill that out.
Got it, awesome.
So moved or seconded or however we do this?
So moved, seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. This one is.
July twenty-third is Masonic Temple.
That's December twenty-third. Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
No, there is one in here for December.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the Masonic Temple.
Temple.
Yeah, for Friday, December twenty-third.
Somebody's taking our interest at the heart.
They've got thirty days' notice anyway. All right, so there is an application from Masonic Temple of East Almetto for one-day liquor license for July twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, from six to eleven PM at the Masonic Hall, forty-three Chestnut Street, East Almetto. Wine and beer only for a nonprofit, which is a birthday party, they have the insurance on file. Entertain a motion to approve the liquor license, one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for July twenty-third, between six and eleven. The second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we have one from the Masonic Temple of East Almetto. Sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine is allowed in chapter one thirty-eight, section fourteen of general laws, on Friday, December twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, seven PM to twelve. Entertainment's also provided, the insurance is on file, they are wine and beer only and it is for a birthday party. Entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for December twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, seven AM to twelve AM.
Seven AM?
I mean, seven PM, sorry, twelve AM, seven PM to twelve AM. It's a long birthday party.
That's a birthday party.
I got a little air.
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We got the September one right there.
Yeah, so we have the Masonic Temple of East Almetto, sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine in chapter one thirty-eight, section fourteen of general laws, on Saturday, September third, two thousand sixteen, seven PM to twelve AM, entertainment's provided, they have the insurance on file, it's in conjunction with a baby shower and entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for September third, between seven and, oops, seven and, seven PM and twelve AM. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
And this is one for July ninth, so.
That ship is sailed.
We think we would take no action on that.
Right, right.
All right, fair enough.
Unless we turn it down.
And just with that one was one of these things where we're talking about this thirty-day window as they kind of fell in between the cracks unfortunately because.
So, no, we aren't taking action on it obviously, but was a license granted or no?
No.
It just went by the.
We basically told them, you're kind of, yeah, you're kind of stuck like the rest of us, we'll figure it out as we go.
I don't believe we had any direct communication with them, so I have no knowledge of what they or didn't have.
They did.
They didn't have a permit, right? If they had it, they didn't have a permit for it, or a license, rather. Appropriations, now we're going to move on to TEU collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. President, I move that we raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars, be distributed as follows, account number one three five, accounting office, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, court treasurer collective's office, account one four five, six thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, information technologies, account one five five, three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, planning, account number one seven five, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, building department, account number two four one, one thousand three dollars, council on aging, account number five four one, five thousand six hundred and twelve dollars, recreation department, account number six three oh, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the purposes of settlement of the union contract.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
I would only point out that the motion was to raise and appropriate, which means because it's a reoccurring cost, this will go into our tax base, it's not using any of the savings, it will be part of the tax amount, the amount that we get taxed every year. Yep.
Any further discussion, Bob?
One thing to keep in mind is there's the additional item relative to the planning department settlement that will need to be acted on as well and I can, it's not included within the numbers, the numbers involved are just the TEU agreement.
I'll do that as a separate motion.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
So, Mr. President, I would, I move that the town appropriate, I want to think, this is a one-time expense, so I would move that the town appropriate from the reserve fund account the sum of three thousand dollars for the settlement of the agreement, the TEU.
So.
Can I make an amendment to that? That it's, my understanding is it's paid over two years, fifteen hundred dollars in FY seventeen and fifteen hundred dollars in FY eighteen, is that correct?
That's right.
Oh, let me back up then. Good catch, thank you.
I thought you were taking it out just so that it was there.
No, 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 not at all, so I'm going to withdraw, had it been seconded? I was going to, I'm going to withdraw it then because it was an appropriate motion to make. So I move that we appropriate fifteen hundred dollars from the reserve fund account for the purpose of settlement of the TEU agreement for FY twenty seventeen.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Good catch, Joe, thank you.
The next item we're not acting on.
Yeah, next item for Chief Melso, outstanding pay.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, or I move that we table that until the next meeting.
Seconded.
All right, it's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And the last agenda is number three, council committee establishment, this was where I made the mistake, Eric, I apologize for that appropriations piece.
I think it's appropriate that we could do it here.
Yeah, it's a committee.
Committee, yeah.
The first one that we have to establish is by the charter by August first, we have to establish a bylaw review committee, which is actually in the next twelve months, has to look at every bylaw and see how it fits in with the town and the charter and where we need to make changes and so on and so forth. I don't know how big we want to make that committee and it's obviously somewhat labor-intensive because we're going to have to look at all the bylaws existing and then make changes that might need to be made to those, so.
If I'm not mistaken, the charter also calls for two members of the charter commission.
Requires us at least making the effort to at least put two members of the charter commission on there, so we're going to have a discussion about which size maybe we want it to be, who are possible.
It could be a good size because, I mean, the bylaws, both the general and specific, every board could, you know, chime in to say, you know, what they found in the trenches have been problems, you know, I mean, and that's something.
I think it's just the general.
The generals, not the planning or anything like that, okay.
I also thought maybe too it was a good idea to try and get some community involvement there and have, I don't know, come up with a strategy maybe to have the members of the community that, you know, have an interest in maybe serving in that.
So that would leave five spots available for community residents, correct?
I mean, we could.
I mean, is it a board of seven if I understand it correctly?
It's not, it's not specified, that's why you, the size of it's not specified.
Is it Article ten, section three?
It's Article ten, I can tell you that.
Okay, it is Article ten, section three.
Yep. Seven persons.
There you go.
Five and two.
Somebody's been doing their homework.
Conducting and the supervision of the town attorney.
Oh, it is seven persons, very good catch, Mike, seven persons to be a committee.
So that does leave us five.
Well, maybe the two representatives from the existing charter can help us find the other five community members, maybe they'd want to participate in that. We're not limited to two, are we? I think it says a minimum of two if possible.
At least two.
At least two if possible.
So we might have, maybe, maybe we'd want to reach out to them first.
Makes sense.
Well, I think we need to look at Chalk U Public without, you know, not to be like insulting to anybody, but two of the charter commission people would make sense to me and then our constituency, I would say, is a good place to draw at least one or two people from if they're interested.
I was just going to say, a lot of it depends on level of interest.
Right, and that mean, so maybe that's not the case.
Vacation time, I mean, this is something that's on the top of our list, August first is what.
Well, they have till April.
Right around the corner.
They have to be appointed by August first.
Right.
Yeah, and they have till April to complete the work.
And then we have one year to complete?
One, well, from one year of the adoption, they have one year to complete from one year of the adoption of the charter, which is what, April to twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve, so they, under the strict rules of the charter, they have till April twelfth to complete their work and then we have up to ninety days to act upon them.
So as we're looking in the community, the people who are willing to step forward, what do we, can we reasonably tell them about their time commitment, what's their, what are we expecting to ask them to do? It seems like a very big task, I mean, we talk in a couple hours a week, are we talking more or less? Do you have any idea?
No idea, but my guess would be a meeting of a couple hours a week, but it would be homework, it would be work that all of them would have to do, but I've never written, I've never done bylaws and.
I'm thinking at least a meeting with a few hours a week that's going to be a minimum. And maybe that's how we put it out.
Yeah, I think we just want to set minimum expectations so that we don't get someone who volunteers and then realizes it's.
This is not what I wanted to do.
Right, okay. We'll give them a worst-case scenario first.
Right, you're going to be busy.
Right, okay.
So any members here that want to be on that committee, I guess, is the next question.
No, because once we get those taxes and those, my time shot.
So we can actually put it out, we can get all seven, could be.
But you're in the charter, you're in the charter commission?
Yeah, I'm busy that day, sorry.
We got enough retirees kicking around here, come on.
I keep telling them, now I'm retired.
So we can, yeah, Bob?
Just one thought, if you don't mind, you may want to consider, as we can reshuffle some of the financial budgets in the town over time, you might want to consider some administrative support to that task because it's going to take somebody in front of a keyboard typing away and.
Right.
That may be committee members, it may be somebody that is under the employ of the town providing administrative support to the committee because it will be real work.
Right. Well, it seems like everybody's so interested in being on this, I'll, I'll take this one, I'll take this one and try and get some people involved and worry about.
I'll be happy to help.
I know, like, having the posting done, just kind of feel out people from the community and see if we can get some.
Maybe Eric could give us a list of the members of the charter and contact information so that we could reach out to them.
Right here in front of this book.
Right in front of your book right there, Mike.
There we go then.
We're all good. So, I mean, that being said, I don't think we have to take any action, now we'll just, I'll pursue it.
No, maybe hopefully I would add it to the agenda next week and maybe we'll have the names to appoint.
Right, all right. That being said, I think we are.
Can we do, we can do the other ad hoc committee, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, you wanted to discuss, actually, at this point, we'll do appropriations, it's debt review, is that what you call it?
Yeah, the purpose of it, as we had discussed in the past, was prior to the appropriations committee being dissolved as a result of the charter, we had established a subcommittee of the charter comit, I mean, I'm sorry, a subcommittee of the appropriations committee that was studying or with a charge to look at our overall debt, come forth with some recommendations as to maybe where we want to be with our debt. And this is, this came as a question on the need for a lot of capital improvements and whatnot and the fact that over the last few years, we've worked hard to pay down on a lot of our debt, we're somewhat lower than most communities right now in terms of our overall debt. So we looked at a whole bunch of data and we decided this would best be suited for a subcommittee. They really hadn't gotten started in that work, they felt as though, we felt as though it was important enough to be completed. I had spoken to the council about it as to whether we wanted to appoint them as an ad hoc committee to complete that work, it'd only be advisory to us, but allow them to do that, that work in background and come forth with their recommendations to us, particularly as we consider next year's budget proposals. So with that in mind, I did go back to the, after the council gave an affirmative on the establishment, I went back to the members, I have three of them that are interested in serving on the subcommittee, or we can call it, why don't we establish it as an ad hoc, Russell Denver, Don Starks and James Broderick are interested in doing the work and I would move that we appoint those three out to the, to an ad hoc committee to examine our debt and bring forth some recommendations to the council by the end of the calendar year.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just three questions, just a three-member board?
Yeah, it's just a committee, it's an ad hoc committee to look at it, yeah.
Commit, sorry.
Yeah.
But if somebody wanted to join that committee, there's no limitation, it could be four or five or whatever, because it's just basically, yeah, if other members said, you know, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we have one of our members participate?
If somebody's willing to.
I mean, yeah, I don't know if there's a reason to, but I don't know, there's a reason not to either, so.
I think we're always open, any of these meetings that we can, we could crash if we wanted to, so just find out what the schedule, when they're meeting and if we're available, we could probably come in and audit or get involved.
Liaison.
What do you say?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Joe, as somebody who did it for the last eight years, it's a real fun subject, so.
Did you make a like?
Feel free, man.
Crash it all you want.
Hey, visit once or twice.